Greetings. Once again, this is the Get to Free Press and I'm George Boston Ryanz and I do this video on behalf of all the active-duty disabled retired military veterans here in the Loudes County, Georgia. We want to continue to show how the Georgia State Flag is not displayed in many locations and thereby, in my most humbled opinion, it is saying to the Reserve Forces and to our active-duty military personnel stationed at Moody Air Force Base that just maybe something is wrong here when we cannot honor the people, the men and women who put their lives on the line to preserve the rights of our beautiful, highly respected nation and state of Georgia, as well as the city of Valdosta, Georgia. This is the Get to Free Press and if your local newspaper, television station, and radio stations do not value the people that serve this nation to keep us a free and democratic society, that is their program. My program is to respect, not just on Memorial Day, not just on Veterans Day, not just at a restaurant, but each and every day. We want our active-duty men and women to understand that we really and truly respect your service, your commitment to your beloved nation. As a retired military veteran, if the other active-duty disabled and retired military veterans don't say anything about not flying the Georgia State Flag here in Valdosta and Loudes County, well, that's your prerogative. Mine is to follow my code of conduct and that is I am an American fighting man, prepared to give my life in the defense of my country. I will not take payroll from the enemy and that I will protect this nation and this state along with this city from all foreign and domestic enemies. And because I live by that code of conduct, I cannot be happy what I see today on many city, county, and state buildings and federal buildings not honoring the state of Georgia and our fellow American citizens that served this nation. This is what it's all about, nothing more and nothing less. Now sit back and be educated on the truth. Now if there had been, let me say this in closer, if there had been here in front of Kendalloo, if there had been a Georgia State Flag, there would have been no need for me as a retired military veteran of 21 years to cut this video. But because I know that many black, white, Japanese, Germans, Chinese, Latinos have served this country and they have served in the state of Georgia, as I said before and I'll say it again, I just came back from many states. Omaha, Nebraska was where I went to and most all of the cities had flying over City Hall a State Flag, but not here in Valdosta, Georgia. And don't take my word for it, don't take it personal. If you can disapprove what I'm saying, then just do it. Cut a video and put aside this and show that there is a flag showing to represent the Reserve Forces, the Air National Guard, and our active-duty personnel now stationed at Moody Air Force Base just 69 miles north of Valdosta while our elected officials sit on station. This is Loudes County, Georgia, the city of Valdosta, Georgia, and this is Wild Adventure City. But if you notice, there is no Georgia Flag flown here. If you notice, there is no flag being flown. This is Kendalloo Forest and if you notice, there is no flag being flown to represent the state of Georgia and the military personnel stationed at Moody Air Force Base nor those in the reserves. But we are going to continue to give you the truth and we're going to continue to let you know how the local elected officials just sit, say, and do nothing concerning respecting the members of our armed forces now stationed at Moody Air Force Base. We who have served this nation and the state of Georgia even in the Reserve Forces must let our children and students at Valdosta State University and other historic colleges know that they can and must do better to respect those people who put their lives on the line here in the state of Georgia and in the United States of America. This is the JH Rainwater Conference Center and we have reported this for some months now that there is no State Flag even flying above a historic monument which represents the members of our armed forces at Moody Air Force Base. We must also inform you that we have questioned why there are no black Americans employed in the high echelons of the conference center in management positions. We're talking about those that get the top mega bucks when blacks from Brooks County have their family reunions at this facility. They come, but there are no blacks benefiting from the top dollars that is being received here in Valdosta and Loudes County, Georgia. And somebody must let the veterans, the disabled, retired, and active-duty personnel at Moody Air Force Base know because if no other news media will address the issues of our veterans except on Memorial Day and Veterans Day, I think that Valdosta is a better community than that.
Ladies and gentlemen, the House of Representatives meeting of Mayor and Council is in order. I'm going to call on Dr. Gerald Week, pastor of Serenity Church, to come forward and lead us in prayer. Please stand and remain standing for the prayer.
By your heads. Gracious and heavenly Father, we thank you today for all your blessings that you have bestowed upon us. Now, God, we pray for all those who are assembled here this evening. We pray for our mayor and all of our city officials as they adjudicate the business of this great city. We pray for clarity, wisdom, insight, and understanding of all things so that all is saving them who will all be better and more unified. In this we pray in sin, amen.
Amen. I plead the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ted Collins is here to do the employee of the month. Now that we've located all the material, we can bring it to the table.
Larry Ogden, you please. You know, while Larry's coming up, I just want to say that I'm blessed to have a lot of good people that work in my department, as do we all. But a lot of times, we tend to overlook or look the past, people who've been here for a long time. And Larry's been here 21 years and he still comes to work every day like it's his first day and he wants to make it refreshing. So, we're really fortunate to have him, put that all equal. Larry began his employment with the city of Valdosta during the department in November of 1997 and currently holds the position of Traffic and Streets Manager of both the Traffic and Street Management Division of the Engineering Department. The Traffic and Streets Manager is responsible for managing the operations of both divisions and he oversees 15 positions. He coordinates activities in the division staff, prepares and issues work assignments, coordinates wireless and fiber projects, ensures that all traffic systems are operational. He oversees the daily operations of the wireless fire, fiber optic, and the closed-cam cued TV network systems. He investigates all matters of compliance related to traffic, control system, fiber optic, signage, street markings, potholes, street curbs, driveway entrance, street riding and sidewalk repairs. Anyway, Larry started his career in the science shop and over the years, he worked his way up to this current position. He sets high standards of confidence and performance for himself. This past year, Mr. Ogden's efforts have been outstanding from carefully overseeing and managing the installation of new equipment for all 128 synchronized intersections citywide to the installation of a new operation system software and equipment within the transportation management center. So through Larry's vision, his direction, his oversight, his drive, the city is the first in Georgia to employ a completely wireless smart traffic signal monitoring system citywide. At the beginning of the school year, Larry monitored and recommended system adjustments to ensure that AM and PM traffic flow at the new Valdosta High School were working and safe. Since assuming his role as the Traffic and Streets Manager, traffic and signal complaints have drastically been reduced. In addition, Larry has significantly improved internal operations by choosing and promoting outstanding individuals to fill vital positions, which has resulted in restored morale and outstanding work efficiency among the ranks. The city of Valdosta City Engineering Department is elevated by the example Larry sets for himself, his reliability, his quality of work, his innovative cost-saving ideas, and his candiness over his 21 years with the city. And it is for these reasons that the Employee Relations Division nominates Traffic and Streets Maintenance Manager Larry Ogden as employee of the month.
Larry, on behalf of the city, Council, myself, and all the department heads, we congratulate you for your commitment and dedication to the city and your job. It's not every day that people are as dedicated as you are and we appreciate it so much. This is a little certificate to go in your office and as you know, you'll have your name permanently engraved on the flag that hangs outside of the Mayor and City Manager's office. And here's a little token of our appreciation. It's probably not near enough, but it'll help, I'm sure. While we recognize we have a few of our leadership Loudes participants in the audience tonight, so all of the leadership Loudes people that are here, would y'all stay? Thank y'all very much. I hope everything's doing well. Oh, we have youth leadership Loudes in the office? So, okay, would y'all stay? We also have, I didn't realize, I'm sorry, I did catch y'all. Thank you very much. Okay, Council, I assume you've had time to review the minutes from the February 21st regular meeting. Are there any additions or deletions to those minutes? Any corrections? If not, they are standard approved by acclamation. All right, we have three public hearing items tonight. Matt, would you come forward? The first one is the downtown developer requested by Daniel Baman.
Thank you, Mayor. First of these requests is a conditional use permit request by Daniel Baman. This is for property located in 118 North Patterson Street. This is at the southwest corner of North Patterson and Bennings Alley. Some of you that talked about the work session may recall a similar request last year for the Orno property, which is on the other side of Bennings Alley. This is a conditional use for a motel lodging facility in CD zoning. As you see, the aerial shows the downtown core of buildings with the public parking lot behind and All Street parking in the Patterson Street. In your packet are support plans. This is an existing fitness center on the first floor. The Baman's were a tenant there for many years. They acquired the building last fall and are expanding it to the second floor, which used to house a grading station. So on the second floor, they're proposing to do some interior renovations for some office space and also a lodging facility in the back portion of the second floor, which is about 380 square feet. The Orno request last year was for three very small motel rooms. This is for one that's a little bit larger. And they need all of these supplemental standards for motels, so like Orno says, they're not going through to be very much replaced with this. It's assuming a deal of the proposed renovation plan, a little bit more space than the European sign that we were looking at last year. Pictures, this is the subject property looking at the corner of Bennings Alley and North Patterson. If you look down the alley toward the west and then from the west looking back toward Patterson Street, the red building is the Orno building down on the left. And then the subject building is here on the right, which has its own back door with front door. And then adjacent area, this is the North Patterson Street corridor downtown and several of the existing buildings that are nearby. Hunting Commission reviewed this at their meeting on February 25th. They found it consistent with the conditional use review criteria, which are there in your packet, and they're recommending approval of this one, subject to three conditions. Number one, approval shall be granted in the name of the applicant only for a motel facility in CD zoning, temporary lodging, transient gas, for periods not exceeding seven days per day. Number two, the facility shall be limited to no more than two lodging rooms with a maximum total of no more than two adults per room, including children, and the use shall operate under its own business license. Number three, conditional use approval shall expire for one year from the date of approval if no request for separate business license has been submitted by that date. And these are conditions that are similar and designed to what we did with the last year, but tailored for a smaller facility. Glad to answer any questions.
Does Council have any questions? All right. Thank you, Matt. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing item, so if there's anyone in the audience at this time who would like to speak in favor of this request, anyone who would like to speak in favor, come forward, state your name for our records.
Hey, my name is Daniel Baman. I'm the owner of your firm. I was just here to answer any questions you might have, if you may have had one.
I mean, on that conditional use permit, what do you see it read as a lodging and...
It's a motel lodging facility, small motel.
And my only concern was with it not having an elevator. Does that have anything to do with it being handpicked accessible? That's, I just want to make sure before we approve something.
I talked with Power Marshal again this morning and he confirmed that it is not required in this building, given the size of the facility, being only two floors and an existing building. And then his written comments are there in your packet. If one were required or anything else is required as part of the plan review process, they would have to address that. What's on your table this evening is simply the use as a motel. Codes that are applicable to that use, they still have to apply.
Any other questions?
Yeah, question. I was just looking at what you're saying, you're using it as a motel, hotel for other people or something like that. It is just one room.
Yes.
My point is, why is it something like an executive suite or a corporate suite or something like that? Why would it prefer a motel versus like a corporate suite or something?
So my intentions are to put it on Airbnb. Do you know if you can put a corporate suite on that? I would have to check with their官网 and see what they say. But whenever I approach Matt about it, he should say it has to be a motel.
And you said it would not be, you got it, it's seven days?
Seven days. Most Airbnb stays are anywhere between one and three days.
Any other questions with Daniel at this time? Okay, all right. Is anyone else in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this request? Anyone who would like to speak in favor? All right, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in opposition? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this request? Hearing none, Council, I'll turn it over to you to answer.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to approve the request as presented, including the conditions. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing all in favor of the motion to stay, please say aye. All opposed at the same time? There is none, motion carries. Okay, Matt, next item, C D on purpose.
Thank you, Mayor. This request is a conditional use permit also for property located on North Patterson Street and 206. This is directly west of the historic Loudes County Courthouse and the center of the block between Valley and Central. It's formerly known as Buried Market, consisted of a retail store and a cafe that had an event space upstairs that served as like a banquet room. But the owner of the property, his applicant, is requesting to change that to be simply all event center on both floors. As you see in the aerial, this is from 11 years ago, which shows the courthouse square and the downtown housing buildings, immediately to the north of the nearest First Methodist Church. And you see some of the parking there behind the Old Regent's Bank Building and All Street Parking. In your packet are two floor plans for the first floor and the second floor, some renovations on the interior, but nothing really extensive, just converting the space and noting some of it. Just like the other property, it has good ingress, egress, it's just a little larger building on the floor. And then you see upstairs here. Subject property, this is a facade. This used to be the Alamo Theater Building a long time ago. They had a different covering on it until the roof fell in and that sort of exposed the building and the applicant was very instrumental in getting it all completely rebuilt and did a very good job and won some awards with that. Now looking down Patterson Street, this is the street skate, First Methodist Church next door, and courthouse across the street. Just like the other requests, Hunting Commission reviewed this on February 25th and they recommend approval of this conditional use to you with two conditions. Number one, approval shall be granted in the name of the applicant only for an event center in CD zoning. There shall be no crowd banging in the bar hall beverages and any events with more than 150 patrons shall be concluded by no later than 1:00 AM. Number two, conditional use approval shall expire in two years from the date of approval if no business license for the event center has been requested and approved by that date. As we talked about at your work session, this is similar to the Patterson Event Center. It's a block and a half away, except this is a much smaller facility, but these conditions were tailored after what we did with the Patterson, but the scale went way back for the different sites. Glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? I'll answer.
Why two years?
Two, it's a larger space and not knowing exactly what the renovations would be, I think they are planning to be open much, much sooner than that. And I think the applicant can share that timeline with you, but just in case they had more renovations to do.
Again, I asked a question about that, talking about, you see, it wasn't going to be that much renovation, what we need, it was pretty much loaded to the time.
They've got some interior renovations with floor plans, clearing away some of the interior walls. I think the kitchen is changing. Little different in scale, I mean, this is more than twice the size of the previous building.
To the two years versus the one?
It's, there's no strong logic behind that, just larger space, more time. Two years is often the default. And if the Council wants to change that, I think that would be fine as well.
Matt, if you look at each applicant and then try to, I love reasonable criteria for that time you give, because sometimes it's three years, five years, or it's just ten after you evaluated, counting your mind, what you kind of come up with.
Correct. Each of these requests is case by case. There's a required pre-application meeting. There's always a timeline, some cases such as with the church, which is a common conditional use request that we get, just fundraising activities to be done or new construction. So we try and tailor it and also be a little generous, because every once in a while, something happens and it delays them. And there's one time limit to hamper them if it's not needed.
I agree with it, because I remember a case, we did, we put a condition, approved something, seven, eight years, you know, then they come up and, you know. So I find that to be really useful to get better, put the timeline. And I would think if somebody went into a particular issue that they could come back and talk to you and, you know, get it worked out, it'd be, they'd be a little bit moving on that.
Correct. We actually maintain what I call a calendar particular file for each of these with all the expiration dates, chronological order, and as we get closer to some, there has not been any activity, we try and contact them just to remind them and see what's going on. We didn't used to do that and we've got some of these approvals literally from 25 years ago that are still in our desk. But also, was that expression?
I don't understand, I'm just saying, because, you know, it took a lot of things to get out of that, we have storms and other things and people might need more time. I just thought you had a criteria versus you gave the first applicant one year, this been two years, and like the first applicant had to do more to get his done. That's all, I guess I've got a type of criteria.
Yeah, I think it's the difference in scale of the... But otherwise, not four, there's...
Any other questions from Council? All right, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this request? Please come forward, state your name.
My name is Kira Johnson. I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Especially if I'm going to ask about that parking, because of the fact is, I think about six or seven months ago, there was a question about people having special events downtown. And we knew that was one of the biggest...
Issues?
Issues that all the proprietors had that they wouldn't have space for their people to park when people having special events. And that's just what, what's your thought on that?
I don't feel like we have a parking issue downtown. I don't feel like people are lazy. There are, there are quite a few public lots, I just don't think they're right in front door of every single business.
Because I had to defend you quite much when there was another in August last year when you said there was, that people, they was having a special event down in August and we was talking about the park.
Me? I don't think we have a park.
We really don't?
Yeah, I just think people are lazy.
You really don't.
People always want to park right in the corner.
I think we have a lot of businesses during the day. And I do cause some parking issues for customers for retail businesses, but there are still available parking spots for people who can park in lots and walk.
We really have enough.
All right, any other questions of Ms. Johnson? Thank you. Is anyone else in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this request? Anyone else who would like to speak in favor? Is anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, counsel, I'll turn it over to you to action.
Mr. Mayor, if we can't bring Burdys back, this is a wonderful idea, and I appreciate that you invested, invested in downtown. And I'd like to make a motion that we approve this request as presented, including the two conditions.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Is any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye. All opposed at the same time? There is none, motion carries. All right, next time. This third request is a resounding proposal by Steve Armia, who's the executive director of United Way of Landis County. They're trying to acquire and purchase the subject property, which is located at 1609 North Patterson Street, unless there was the North Patterson Street pattern going on here. This is also local historic district, but in Brooklyn North. As you see on the map and screen, it is an R10 currently, and it is right at the intersection of Georgia Avenue and North Patterson. And they're replacing OP zoning. The proposal is to convert the existing residence into a professional office for administrative use by United Way. In your packet, it's a copy of a conceptual site plan. They would leave the existing house pretty much untouched, except the handicap access added to the rear. The center of the block would have a small parking lot to accommodate the required parking. There's a small shed in that center, which is sort of on its way out, that's another measure, but that would be completely removed. And then in the backyard is the existing accessory dwelling unit that was the mother loft suite of the previous owner from many years ago. They would convert that into office use as well, either storage or perhaps a small training room, which I think is the living room of the, of the apartment. Again, it's conversion of the historic structure, which is not always an easy thing to do. They had a full plan review process, it's yet to go, this is conceptual. They need to prepare a detailed site plan showing parking, but also some needed renovations in the house to make it accessible for handicap and use as an office. And they're beginning that process now. But the first step really for them to make all of it eligible is to rezone to OP. If you look at the zoning map and the character area of the house, it's institutional activity center, which is associated with BSU, which is dotted to the southwest. And then the zoning pattern on Patterson, you see a lot of OP and OP zoning northward to be done some other residential uses. One thing to point out, you have the Berkwood North, the bulk of it, as shown, is R10 zoning. But what's interesting to note is many of these properties that are R10 along North Patterson are not single tenant homes. One example is the house directly to the south, has been an accountant's office since 1969, in its own R10, but back then the rules were different. Southern area, you have properties that are owned by the university or otherwise institutional uses, including a fairly large church. So OP zoning certainly fits in this pattern. Hunting Commission at the meeting recommended approval of the two, having found a consistent system of the progress plan and the standards for exercises of empowerment, which are there in the packet, and they're recommending approval of the two. Glad to answer any questions you may have. Any questions on this side of the council? Okay, all right. Is anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this request? Come forward, state your name and speak.
My name is Steve Armia, and I'm the executive director of the Greater Los Angeles United Way. On behalf of the state and board, I'd like to thank you for your consideration. I know that you've overseen and reviewed our packet, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions, Mr. Governor? Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this proposal? Is anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this request? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Okay, counsel, entertain a motion. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to accept the request as stated. We have a motion and a second. Is any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye. All opposed at the same time? There is none, motion carries. Okay, this is construction, we're bringing this back.
Okay, this next item is consideration bids for street repairs in various locations around the city of Los Angeles. As I explained on Tuesday, again, the workshop, we maintain over 300 miles of streets. We have identified 13 different areas in town that have significant degradation of the pavement. We have an airport pre-med committee. Two firms showed up, that H&amp;H and Rings and Sign. We opened the bids and the low bid went to Rings and Sign. We're going to ask you this evening to approve the low bid to Rings and Sign's construction, the amount of $182,909 plus a 10% contingency, for a total of $201,199.90. I'll take any questions that you might have.
Any questions with that on the side? All right, counsel, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve at the same continued fee.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Before we go any farther, Ms. Deidre Powell, our probate judge, is sitting back there in the audience, and she's so young looking, I thought she was with leadership land. But Deidre, we're glad to have you with us. Thank you. Okay, at this time, this portion of our general, our citizens can be heard, so we give you three minutes to come forward. You come forward and state your name, so we can get back to you and your phone number and address, and...
My name is John Robinson. I live in Nashville, on Allstate Drive. My telephone number is, um, 229-412-6842. I come to speak in behalf of the neighborhood, which, you know, I see some improvement, cut customer code came out, that, that is, we were speaking about, in general, about the retirement stuff. And out in the neighborhood there are, you know, active deceased residents that are Patrick Collins, customer code, they came out, they said half dollar, makes it a retirement, everybody just had a particular thinking.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you very much. Any other citizens to be heard? Anyone else would like to come forward and speak? Seeing none, Mark, give a report.
Just a few, just a few things, Mayor, tonight. First, I want to remind you of our strategic summit going on this retreat next Friday, next Friday and Saturday. We'll be giving those packets to you, we're working really hard to get them to you tomorrow. You'll probably get the electronic version tomorrow, and then Monday we'll have ready the book, the hard copy for those who want to go and come by and get the hard copy, so you guys can be reviewing that and be educated on what we're going to talk about for Friday and Saturday. I think it's, I think it's really going to be a good, a good two days, first retreat, strategic planning for us. If I can, Mayor, I just wanted to kind of publicly, once again, I know we did this somewhat Tuesday evening, but congratulate our new police chief, Leslie Mannheim. And I would like also to come forward and say a few words, if that's okay, but while she's coming forward, I just want to say this was really some significant competition for this jud, for this job. We had applicants from around the United States, we had 86 total applicants. How we set the interviews up, we had a police chiefs around Georgia, the Police Chief Association, we had a panel of five folks that, that ruled the remaining candidates, and we had a panel department heads that, that went to a second panel interview. And I must say, Leslie came up on top within her peer group of police chiefs around the state of Georgia. That speaks very highly of Leslie and, and her peers. And so just want to give her an opportunity to say a few words this afternoon.
Thank you, city manager, mayor, council. I'm truly honored to have been selected for this position. It was a hard task to go through, but I'm so excited that I accomplished it. I'm looking forward to the future of our department. I'm excited for what's ahead of us and the continued support we get from council and mayor and from the city itself and all the citizens, and I'm excited about our future. Thank you.
Yes, we, we are honored to have such a fine group of powerful heads, and that's so you'll do nothing but add to that, I'm sure, so we're looking forward to working with you. Thank you. All right, if I can sit there? Any counsel comments? All right.
Let's congratulate Chief Mannheim. I had a conversation with her, so we're going to be, is, am I, is it okay to say?
Uh, sure.
We're going to be getting with some of the council members, and we're going to be walking these neighborhoods, introducing her to some of our citizens and some of the police officers, so we can get our community involved in helping us police our streets. So when she calls on us, be receptive of the call, because it's going to take us to get our streets cleaned up. Don't be hesitant to call, because that's what they're going to take, that's what it's going to take for us to do.
Okay, thank you. Any other counsel comments?
Well, I will be calling chief, because we've been ready to start a neighborhood watch in District One. We have our first meeting on March 23rd at Pastor Jenkins Church, New Bible Church on North Forest. So I'm going to get with you next week for your officers to come out and teach us how to take back our streets in District One, because our goal is, we shouldn't expect the police officers to do everything in our community, we need to do it ourselves also. And use our click and fix, and we can tell on everybody with click and fix and take our neighborhoods back.
Good deal. All right. Anyone else?
Mark, when did you say we were going to get that drainage cleaning up, open up the old, the old avenue around West Side and over there? I think about two months since I made...
Yes, that's the DOT area there. But what we did Friday evening, Angela Bray, our stormwater manager, actually went out herself, and there was that trash from the heavy rains we had, it got into the canal as well. So she went out herself and got into the canal and got the trash out. DOT is supposed to be here the end of this week or early next week, and they're going to dredge it and print it out with the equipment they have. Right now, we just don't have the equipment to do what is needed to get the weed growth out, that is what we get.
You know, had been put in there several years ago, and I remember one time DOT coming cleaning that out, the city had, had been maintaining that. And we, you know, we need to do a little bit better job on that. With that being said, we got repaid, stormwater speed, you go down Forest Street from the outside drive all the way back to Park Avenue, all of those drains up on them driveways, they, they just got stocked up. And we, we need to do a little bit better. So we got several people that tell my understanding that's in that department, that we, you know, we have a special funding for that. And I would like, I would suggest that, that we do a little bit better job on cleaning some of these, these, these drainings stocked up, the driveways that I see, particularly you can see them down Forest Street.
Sure. All right, any other comments from the council?
Yeah, I'd just point out two, two things. We, we had a great turnout on Saturday for our grain opening for the Miracle League Complex and Freedom Parks, and everyone that played a part in that, thank you for, for doing that for us. We, we do start our games this week, March 12th and 14th, so six and seven o'clock, if you want to come and see some excitement and some fun, we've got about 100 players now. So we've, we've got a lot of people, a lot of youth, youth play on Tuesday, and the adults play on Thursday. And the other thing is that today, we were able to utilize it today for Special Olympics. The games came here, we had over 380 athletes out there playing and eating on the pavilion and playground and using every ounce of that new complex, the basketball, soccer and everything. So, you know, once again, this is what we built it for, and I'm just glad that we were able to utilize it for something such as Special Olympics to be the first event. I told Tammy Crosby, I said, the Miracle League didn't get to use yet, you know, and Special Olympics got to use it. And that's a big to do, to have that city, almost 400, we had almost 400 kids, and I want to say at least 15 different schools, you know, in, in four different school systems as far as districts, as far as Marion County was there, I think, and Homewood, Fitch County and so forth. So come out and see what your community has done, because for the next six weeks, on Tuesdays and Thursdays, take about an hour or so and ride out and see it. Thank you.
Any other comments? In that case, I'll entertain a motion. We have a motion to adjourn, all of us in favor, say aye. Clear adjourn.